Good evening, welcome to the April 21st, 2025 West Claremont School Board Meeting. Mr. Ramona, please take a roll.
Mr. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
Ms. Sandborg.
Present.
Mrs. Spencer.
Present.
All present?
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, it looks like we have the motion to adopt the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
So do.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Sandborg.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Pat.
Yes.
Five yes.
Next up is Dr. Foltz.
Good evening. It's always exciting when I can come up here and recognize students and staff. So this is one of the best parts of my job. I first want to start out by recognizing our school nurse administrator of the year, Heidi Sandlin. Heidi, please come up. Mrs. Sandlin, Heidi was awarded the school nurse administrator of the year by the Ohio Association of School Nurses. This statewide award is given to a nurse that demonstrates leadership, dedication, and exceptional knowledge in the field of school healthcare. Heidi's impact has been felt within our schools and throughout the community partnerships she has developed. Her work keeps our students healthy so that they can achieve at their highest level. We are proud to recognize Heidi Sandlin for this achievement.
So Becky, or Becky's not here tonight, so you guys are taking pictures for her? Oh, that's her name. There was a huge dinner in her honor up in Columbus. Chuck, you got to go to that, right? Yes. And so, this is quite a huge honor to be named across the entire state. And I know this upcoming school year, you're going to be the president of your organization. Okay. So Heidi is always like looking ahead. She is always on the cutting edge, keeping us very innovative around here and making sure that our best practices are maintained throughout the system. One of the projects she's working on right now, what's it called? The one at Merwin.
Project Adam.
Project Adam is all about the AED. And so she's gonna bring that back to you guys probably later this summer. We'll celebrate that. But she doesn't hit walls. Like she hits walls, she knocks them down. Like that's Heidi Sandlin, so.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Next, would all the master teachers please come forward? West Claremont master teachers are educators who lead with heart, are amazing teammates, and always put students first. They take the time to understand what their students need, create warm classrooms, and keep finding new ways to grow in the teaching profession. Whether they're helping colleagues trying something new or stepping up to lead, they're making a real difference in the schools every day. So we are proud to recognize we have two new initial master teachers and two renewals. So I'm gonna read, I asked the principals to say a little bit about them, so you've got a true feel of how they're respected and loved at their building. So we're gonna start with our, let's start with our initial. So Tara Hector. Tara teaches first grade at Holly Hill and has been in the district since 2016. Principal Josh Young writes, "Ms. Hector is a shining example of a student-centered educator. She's incredibly focused and driven to ensure that every student is successful. As a professional, she is intentional about her growth, and she prioritizes efforts that will enhance our approach as a building and as a district." Next initial was Trina Napier. Trina teaches social studies at West Claremont High School and has been in the district since 2002. Principal Greg Potabom writes, "Trina has been a dedicated educator in our district since the 2002-2003 school year and is now completing her 23rd year of service. Throughout her career, she has consistently demonstrated excellence in instruction, leadership, and student engagement, making this recognition incredibly well-deserved. Trina currently serves as a social studies course group lead and assistant national honor society advisor, and she will continue, she will be stepping up into the lead advisor for the role of national honor society next school year. Her past leadership as social studies department supervisor reflects her longstanding commitment to curriculum, collaboration, and continuous improvement. We're incredibly proud of Trina and grateful for the impact that she continues to make on our students and the school community." Next, we have Jada Kennedy. This is a renewal. Jada, Jada has been as a literacy coach based at Willowville Elementary School, has been in the district since 2013. Principal Kevin Jones writes, "Jada Kennedy is the very definition of what it means to be a master teacher. She has high expectations for students, and she believes that all students can learn at a high level. As a result, her students can show tremendous growth year in and year out. Jada pairs this high expectation with maximizing instructional time as she teaches every second of the time she has with her students in front of her. She also challenges students by moving at a perky pace..." Perky pace, I like that one. "...while using student data to design her daily lesson plans. In addition to students that she teaches, she also coaches the adults in our building, helping them plan their unit instruction and collaborating with teams to support the implementation of our ELA curriculum. We are blessed to have Jada on our team. She goes above and beyond for all of our staff and students, and she holds herself to the highest standard when it comes to ensuring excellent results." And finally, we have Jeannie Hornberger, who is renewing her master teacher. Principal Curtis Mason writes, "West Claremont is lucky to have had Mrs. Hornberger teach excellence in our classroom for the past 12 years, the last six years at Clough Pike Elementary. The distinguished achievement reflects her dedication to educational excellence, professional growth, and her unwavering commitment to student success. As a master teacher, she continues to inspire both her students and colleagues, being innovative, bringing innovative practices, leadership, and a deep passion for teaching into the classroom every day." At this time, we should give them a hand.
So as these ladies assemble, I will speak to the whole, what did you call it? Perky pace?
Perky pace.
I would say all four of these ladies have a perky pace. I'll let Larry take their picture while I gather my thoughts here. That looks pretty good. Everybody's certificates are upright. I think for Mr. Jones, because we've talked about this perky pace, and I've talked about it with Jada before, it's the intentionality, and I would say they all four reflect that intentionality in their work. This master teacher effort is a huge effort, and all four of them not only impact in their classroom with their students, they impact the adults in the building that they work with, and it goes beyond. They're involved in after-school activities. They're very, very involved women in each of their schools, and that's what makes them special. So I was wondering if any of you guys have any comments or something that you've learned from the process or anything that you would share, since you don't always get a chance to be here with us. And you are, yeah, thank you.
I agree, the reflection process and so forth. I wish everyone would do this even to some degree. It's been a pretty large undertaking when you first do it, but it is so meaningful to just really think about, you do your every day, you go, you do what's expected, and you think you're doing great things, but then you can really sit down and talk to colleagues and like you were saying, it's kind of helpful because you're sitting, I don't know, maybe I, other people notice all the things that you do that you didn't even know you should put in there. So I think it's, it's really, and Jeannie and I have talked, well, maybe we should talk about this, and oh, yeah, we also do this, and we work here. So it's just a really good process for reflecting on what you do and also what more you do.
Yes, which just creates more questions. Yeah, when you really think about it. Well, thank you guys so much. We're very proud of you.
I would like to say that the members of the master teacher committee are Kim Sears, our committee chair, Rena Ford, Barb Kenny, and Sue Lippman Hall. And they said, they help them, they walk them through it, they do all the gradings on the word book, so they do a phenomenal job. All right, now we get to celebrate some kids. I love it. So with the, I'd like to invite our National DECA competitors and Mr. Brady up in front of the room. The West Claremont High School DECA students have earned the incredible opportunity to compete at the DECA National Competition in Orlando, Florida. Each of their events focuses on real-world business topics ranging from entrepreneurship and financial literacy to hospitality, marketing, and enterprise management. Though hard, through hard work, preparation, and outstanding execution, these students rose to the top of their field and now represent the district on a national stage. Their success reflects not only their individual dedication, but also the support and guidance of the DECA advisor, Stephen Brady. We're proud of their achievements and wish them their best on nationals. So we're proud to recognize Narendra Deshmukh, Elijah Daniels, sorry, Narendra Deshmukh for qualifying for nationals in student-based enterprises, Elijah Daniels for qualifying for nationals in student-based enterprise, Aidan Gardner for qualifying for nationals in principles of entrepreneurship, Isabel Kane for qualifying for nationals in hospitality and tourism, and Peyton Corti qualifying for nationals in personal finance, financial literacy. So let's give them a hand.
We gave them 17 things to hold, and then we wanted to take their picture. It's been fun to see these young men over time. They've been, they're involved in so many things. They kind of run the school at this point, right? So that's pretty much it. And here, you guys are getting on a plane on Saturday for your competition. So we will keep you on our thoughts and prayers and wish you the very best. I know you'll make West Claremont High School really proud.
Where are you going?
Orlando.
Yeah, you guys approved it a little bit ago.
Good choice.
All right, thank you.
So it looks like we're moving on to Taste of Merwin.
Yeah, we'll do a video, and then we'll do the break. Thank you, Chumley.
We've been on a hot streak lately.
We are trying to create an atmosphere of budget-friendly, healthy meals that the students can fix with their parents, doesn't take a long time, and that they'll, they'll be able to...
Everything's so, it was really kid-friendly, and I love it.
Atmosphere of budget-friendly, healthy meals that the students can fix with their parents, doesn't take a long time, and that they'll, they'll be able to enjoy with the entire family.
The first-ever Taste of Merwin brought families together at Merwin Elementary School in March. This was a time for families with need to cook a healthy and nutritious meal with the help of their little ones. The recipe: chicken enchiladas.
And this is Mrs. Parker, one of her recipes she actually uses at home. So some of the ingredients, we have a little Spanish rice, little green chilies, some chicken, tortillas, and who doesn't like lots of cheese? Mm-hmm. And some corn, too, because I mean, we got some healthy ingredients in here, too. So, nice little meal for the family. So the idea is Ms. Parker's going to show how she makes things, and they're gonna do step-by-step along with Mrs. Parker, who's gonna be here at the center, showing them exactly what they need to do to put this meal together. And then they will also be taking a recipe home with them with directions to follow for later on, and as well as ingredients and timing of how to cook it at home once they get home.
Tonight, I'm gonna be here cooking with Ms. Parker, and we will be making enchiladas.
Principal Erin Parker led the demonstration with the help of two sous chefs who want to be real chefs when they grow up. Ellie Birchfield, a fifth grader at Merwin, explains why she loves cooking.
Mostly because like it brings families together and it makes like people happy.
Lori McMillan, an office assistant at Merwin, explains how she came up with the idea.
Last year, when we were giving out food bags, we noticed that there were a lot of prepackaged things in the bags, and that made me think that maybe it would be a good time to bring in some fresh food. Maybe something that the kids could fix with their parents or fix while their parents were gone. So that's kind of how it all got started.
Kroger donated the food and supplies to make this a reality.
Yes, we really appreciate Kroger for donating all of the food and supplies that we needed to make this a success.
Corey Seibert has children at Merwin and also works there. She says the experience was a big hit for her family.
Yeah, I loved it. It was really easy. It was fun for my kids to be able to get their hands dirty with shredding a chicken, which I've never actually let them do at home. So it was nice to experience that they absolutely can do that. And then they were able to roll up everything, so it was really kid-friendly, and I love it.
I think West Claremont Strong means coming together and as one unit, and no matter where you come from or where you go home to, but just coming together and being strong together in whatever you do together.
Everybody's kind of like a part of the herd. They always work together. When things, like arguments happen, everybody can, it's fixed straight away, and everybody just goes back to being buddy-buddy. It's not ever that serious or something like that.
We are West Claremont Strong. What is your WC Strong story?
Thank you. We're gonna take about a 10 or 15-minute break so we can go out and have some juice. I believe there's some cookies out there, and then we'll come back in about 10 or 15 minutes, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, we are back from our break, a brief break. We'll jump into the public speaking. I don't believe that there are any cards back there for public speaking, but on this topic, real quick, I want to just kind of point out that we as a board, again, this is my first term running and I've learned a lot of things, and we as a board, one of the things I've learned during public speaking is that sometimes it can seem insincere, it can seem awkward. We have the community, which I truly appreciate whenever they come to any of our meetings and participate. We have them standing at the podium and we're listening to whether it's positive feedback or negative feedback, and we're just kind of sitting here and listening, and it just seems like we're not really engaged, and that's not the case. We are listening, we take everything that we hear, and each of us will do our own digesting, and so I just, I want to continue to encourage the public to come speak at our meetings. You know, there are policies to that, and there are some procedure matters that have to take place, and like I said, it can seem like it's insincere, but it is not the case, and we do appreciate that as a board. Moving on, it looks like is our consent agenda. Start with Dr. Foltz.
In front of you is the personnel agenda for April 21st, 2025. On the agenda today, we have the resignations of three teachers, two paraprofessional aides, and one custodian. This agenda also includes the proposed hiring of four teachers and two paraprofessional aides. The agenda, we have the proposed transfer of a part-time paraprofessional aide at Holly Hill into a full-time paraprofessional aide position, that's been vacated. The agenda also includes granting of extended days to the new school psychologist that's on our sheet today for the 25th, 26th school year. The 15 extended days are typical for school psychologists each year. On the agenda, we have the proposed approval for supplemental contracts for multiple running club advisors in mock trial. Also included in the agenda is the proposed approval for multiple unpaid leave evapencies, substitute custodian, and multiple volunteers and student teachers. Finally, in the work beyond the contract section, is the proposed approval for payments for specialized program development. This concludes the review of the personnel agenda submission for your consideration.
Next is Mr. Gettard.
I'm excited to see this has to get all the credit to Angie, because we're normally scrambling in June on this to see if we have gotten this done, and so it's always a reminder in February, March, and we got it done in April. So, this is just for the board to approve our OHSAA membership for next year. We have to do this, board has to take action on this for us to be able to compete in the OHSAA. So, this is something we do every year. Any questions?
Item 7.03 is actually a little bit misnamed. It's actually bringing the letter of intent to purchase Chromebooks. The RFP was released back in February, the board approved the release, we went through the whole process, we brought the item to the board to issue a letter of intent to purchase once we were able to evaluate Chromebook costs and all of that because of the impending tariffs and all of those things. And so that letter of intent to purchase has been issued, and that is in your materials.
Item 7.04 is request for approval of minutes, and those were for the regular meeting that was held on April 7th. Item 7.05 is a request for approval of donations, and I'll read those briefly. Withamsville Tabasco PTO donated Jersey Mike's dinner and a cookie tray for the staff during the conference night. There was an anonymous donation of $400 to West Claremont High School Athletic Department. RJ Cinema donated 600 small popcorn bags and 600 movie tickets to Withamsville Tabasco Elementary for the Incredible Kids Day Event. Withamsville PTO donated mascots to Withamsville Tabasco Elementary for the Incredible Kids Day Event. RJ Cinema donated six bags of popcorn to Withamsville Tabasco Elementary for attending attendance awards. Mike and Cheryl Zalatell donated 50 boxes of Cheerios to Somerside Elementary Blessing Box. Peterman donated food for the District Partners in Education Event. Big Time Balloons donated balloons for the District Partners in Education Event. SHP donated food and beverages for the District Partners in Education Event. Phil Dodge donated $1,000 to the district. The Cincinnati Reds donated 50 sticker sheets and 120 trading cards to Withamsville Tabasco Elementary. And Kroger donated grocery items to Merwin Elementary for the A Taste of Merwin Event, the video that we just previewed. Item 7.06 is motion to approve the authorization for the superintendent treasurer to negotiate and execute contracts as presented. The technology contracts for the E-rate are requested for that approval, and there are several that are listed in the attachment. Item 7.07 is request for approval of purpose and budget statement for the current year, the 24-25 school year. Those are for, those are for the school's student activity funds. And item 7.08 is a supplementing and amending the annual appropriations. There were four different federal programs that we received a revised allocation. They were for the limited English proficiency, the Title I, Title IV, excuse me, Title IV and then Title II-A. That amendment is in the amount of $26,849. And then item 7.09 is request for the approval of financial statements for the month ending March 31st, 2025, as presented. So, the consent agenda is item 7.01 through 7.09 as requested.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You've heard the recommendation, would someone like to make a motion?
Stand up.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes? Thank you.
Item 8.01 is the resolution issuing a Level 4 decision, so I recommend that the board approve the resolution issuing Level 4 decision on complaint as presented.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation, would someone like to make a motion?
Stand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rudy, thank you. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes?
Item 8.02 is the superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution ratifying my certification of compliance with the federal anti-discrimination laws as presented.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation, would someone like to make a motion?
Stand up.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Samborn, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes?
And we've been putting, 8.03, it's the statement of facts, we've been including that in every board meeting, just to, as a reminder, that we do have an issue on the ballot May 6th. This is for a new pre-K4 elementary school, which would reduce our elementarys from seven to six, become more efficient, and to have some operational savings down the road. We have the 5'8" middle school, and that has, was, basically came to be for two reasons. Number one, we have overcrowding already in the elementary school, and so moving the fifth grader out would help alleviate that. Number two, we have the oldest, or sorry, not the oldest, we have the largest middle school in the state of Ohio, and it has the earliest start time. The conditions there in that environment are not what I would say are optimal for middle school students, and so the 5'8" building would allow us to create those conditions. And when Dan and I have been out meeting with PTO meetings over the last couple of weeks, how I usually start is to think about, who are we actually talking about? Who's going to be impacted most by these facilities? And the answer is, if you're in kindergarten, you're going to be the first fifth grader in this new building. You know, if you're in first grader, you're the sixth grader in this building, and so on. And so, I think as families, especially if you're in a new building, or you've been in a renovated building like Clough, you might not be thinking down the road if you're a mom of an early learner. And so, we just want to bring it to everyone's attention that if we're not able to take advantage of the Ohio Facilities Commission 20% on the ballot in May 6th, the timeline for when that building may happen, if ever, is really in question, because we will have to turn our attention to operational focus. We'll need to make sure that we have the funds available to keep the lights on, to take care of the maintenance of these buildings that include roofs, asphalt, windows, heating and air conditioning, all the pieces, and that will become a main priority of our budget, whereas now, our main priority of our budget is the classroom. And we would have to reverse that a bit, based on the success or failure of this levy. So, we've had some great conversations, we had huge turnouts. I say, you know, 25 or more people is a huge turnout for us at the PTOs and the Booster Club meetings. People were very engaged, very interested, and really just not sure if people can afford this at this time. Like that, that really continues to be a conversation, and whenever I met with that, obviously, we show empathy for the challenging times that it is right now. And yet, our responsibility is to address the growing population and to plan for the future of West Claremont, and so that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. And people really do seem to be very supportive over the overall plan, so. Are you guys hearing anything more out there, or things that you've, myths that you think we need to bust? I'll say, I'll add one that has come up. People say, what did you do with all that money from the evaluation? Here you are, we just had a raise in valuation of property taxes, and where did all that money go? Well, Dan's explained it multiple times, but just to reinforce, that money has been invested back into the school so that we've not come out to voters. We were supposed to come out, our prediction was 2024, we've been able to extend that to at least until 2026. We will keep working on extending that, if it's possible. It's getting more and more challenging all the time because of all the changes we keep hearing from the legislators, but that's what we would aim to do. So, are you guys hearing anything else?
There is a misconception that the income tax proposed is 25%.
Oh, instead of .25?
Yes, I've been correcting that, and so I have some other.
Wow, that's, that would take my breath away, yes. And that .25, that's another point that Dan and I end up talking about. It is a built-in, long-term plan. Once the facilities are up and running, that .25 will continue to grow over time, and we'll be able to invest that back. The way the ballot language reads, that can't be for salaries and benefits and things for classrooms, this is more the building infrastructure and keeping up with the maintenance. So, it truly is a long-term plan. You know, I think about those young gentlemen that we just recognized with DECA, I mean, this is going to impact their children. I mean, this is a long-term plan for the district. Anybody else have anything that they're hearing or missed that we need to bust?
I believe there's also a misconception that we want shiny buildings to look good.
Yeah.
And I've been doing my best to explain that.
Yeah, right now, we have an elementary, Holly Hill, that has 250 students in it, and we have Amelia that has 800. So, in terms of maximizing your resources, I think if we were starting over West Claremont today, we would not design for a really small and a really big. And when we surveyed families and community, we found that 600 was kind of the number that people thought, that's a good size for an elementary. And so, with some rethinking of how the district is organized, that's how we came to the six schools. That would mostly, they would have about 600 students in them. We are seeing that we're crowded now, and the projections do tell us 1,300 more students by 2030. So, it is not just about, we want some new furniture and we want some new things. It's about ensuring that every student has the right kind of learning environment and the right kind of experience, because there are differences. I mean, we worked very hard to keep everything as equitable as possible in the classroom across the school district, but there are some environmental challenges when you have buildings that were not built for this era. Anything else you would add?
At this time, not really. We'll talk a little bit about advocacy.
I know that Mr. Gettard is scheduling, well, we had on the books a key communicators meeting, so we were trying to get as many people possible at the key communicator, so that our parents who lead organizations are the most informed and can help share those conversations. If you go to our website, it is, the statement of facts is available on bond information, and that's also where you would find one-pagers. We've handed out a lot of them over the course of the last couple of weeks, and people do find them helpful to try to explain to their family, to their neighbors, and to the staff what the facts are.
Ms. Sam, speaking of that, will you reiterate that again? Because I do see on Facebook and different areas where people aren't, they don't know where to get this information, and then others are chiming in and saying it's on our Facebook page, like there's.
Yes, so if you go to our main website, you go, click on the banner at the top, it says bond information, it'll take you to a page that is chock full of information. There's videos where Dan describes, they're very short little videos that describe our financing. There are FAQs that we've gathered over time to help answer any questions people have, and then we've created some documents that are, we call them our one-pagers, that say a lot of information in a short, in a small space. So, that's on the statement of facts section. So, it's all there, and whenever we get questions, which we are getting tons of questions, so it doesn't, it doesn't change all the time. Every now and then, there might be a tweak every now and then, but if there are more myths out there that we need to bust, we can do that, we can create new things if needed.
The only thing I would add to that last part is, if that seems intimidating to go to the website and try and search for the, you know, the answer to the question that you have, if it seems intimidating to fill in the question and submit it to us, there is a very significant willingness on our part, that if you want to call and talk to us, we'll call and talk and answer your question to you. I think that was almost a little bit evident tonight about our willingness to answer any question that we can, and if we can't answer it right then, we'll go find the answers for you.
Yeah, we're happy to be invited places if people have small groups they want us to meet with, we're happy to do that, too. We have time on our schedule for that.
I'd appreciate that, you guys.
Sure. And that's all for my comments tonight, unless you guys have questions for me about anything? Well, actually, I misspoke. I gave you a folder, it's a little manila packet. Inside of it, you don't have to get into it now, but there are WC Strong pens that have a little note card with it, so if you guys want to write some notes to staff and recognize them, we've got just so many WC Strong cards to give, and thought we'd give you guys a chance to recognize some people on your own. So, it's just things that, if you fill it out and bring it back to me, I'll make sure they get distributed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 9.01 is request for the approval of a tax incentive agreement between West Claremont Local School District and Union Township for the Ivy Cove, or for the Cove at Ivy Point. I wish I would have the ability to put it up, but if you're able to look through the documentation there, to me, from my perspective and opinion, this is really a neat thing to do, and kudos to the economic development people with Township. If you look at that parcel, it is kind of a triangular shaped piece of ground, it's not very large, almost looks like a green space or common space between a couple of facilities around the roundabout there, and it doesn't look like it's very buildable, but compliments to the people who had the vision of putting something on that piece of property, taking land that is basically non-revenue producing, and make it revenue generating for the district, for the school district. So, if you recall, Union Township on their TIF agreements have a whole harmless agreement with the school district. And what that means is, is where through the TIF agreement, that the improvements on that property are tax exempt for 30 years, okay? But through a payment in lieu of taxes that goes to the township, through the county, to the township, the township makes us hold on taxes that we'd have otherwise would have received, okay? So, it is a very positive thing for the school district as that land gets developed, it becomes revenue producing for the school district as if the TIF weren't there, okay? So, we appreciate that continued partnership, we appreciate the fact that they're finding parcels of land that, you know, when you look at it, it doesn't look like it would be buildable, and here they're going to be able to put something on it that will produce revenue to the school district. So, and again, with all of these, we do have things reviewed by our council to make sure everything is in order. This is, I've reviewed it, it is similar to the prior tax increment financings that are in place with the township, and so, it's the recommendation that the board approve the tax incentive agreement, or the TIF agreement between the West Claremont Local School District and Union Township for the Cove at Ivy Point.
Thank you, Ms. Romano. You've heard the recommendation, would someone like to make a motion?
Stand up.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Spencer, thank Ms. Spencer, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Five yes, thank you. And that's for the comments, you know, I'm going to talk a little bit about the advocacy and kind of where we're at. And so, we're at a transition point from the governor to the House, and now moving to the Senate for the state budget. But there's two things really at play. There is the state budget, and there is a host of legislation on property taxes that impact school districts, and so I just want to talk a little bit about those, and maybe as a backdrop, just give some information. So, again, this comes from Howard Leeder, who is with the Ohio Economic Policy Institute, and I know this was some information when we went down to Columbus. If we go back to 1975, and we look at the two classes of property that are taxed, class one is the residential and agricultural property, class two is the commercial industrial. Back in 1975, the class one percent, so out of 100% of both of those properties together, the residential and agricultural made up 46%, okay, the share of that tax base, the class two made up 54%. In 2023, that changed to 75% residential and agricultural, 25% commercial industrial. So, what does that mean? It means there was a tax shift, right, where the growing part of that tax base is on residence and agricultural, okay? Point one with it. What else has been happening is there's a lot of criticism to school districts that are at the 20 mil floor, which West Claremont is one of those, and we've been at that 20 mil floor for some time. And we have to go back to understand, why was that 20 mil floor put in the first place? So, what the 20 mil floor is, when House Bill 920 was put in place, that said, hey, because property values are growing so fast back in mid, early to mid 70s, okay, they wanted to have some, an equalization formula that said, hey, you can't let these taxes, quote unquote, back then, the same things are being said today, drive grandma out of her home, or drive people that are on a fixed income to a point where they cannot afford their home. So, that, House Bill 920 was put in place, equalized taxes, and really, when levies are voted, it really resulted in voting to a dollar amount versus a rate that kept increasing the dollar amount. One year later, okay, the legislation put in place, kind of a stopgap, it was for two reasons. It said, hey, for school districts, you have, there's a 20 mil floor, can't, taxpayers should pay homeowners, property owners, okay, commercial industrial, shouldn't pay less than 2% or 20 mils on their property values. Two reasons why is, one, it was about survival, as property values went up, okay, and things were increasing, it really helped those school districts gain revenue that otherwise they couldn't gain. The second reason is, when you looked at the state formula at that time, the state formula said, hey, if you want money from the state, you should at least assess 20 mils, okay, for that local school district. So, in order to get the money from the state, you had to assess the 20 mils to get it, 2% of the property values. That's why it was put in place. I can't, we would be here way too long, and I'd have to hear tomorrow morning from Randy, okay, about all the changes that took place from 1976 to today regarding property taxes. It is, and the superintendent mentioned it earlier, it is a very complex system. What we don't need is more complexity to property taxes with, not just with the Bynum bill or the Bynum budget that's in place, that now wants to do some restrictions on cash balances, and the answer to if your cash balance gets too high, gives the authority to the county auditor, not may, but will, reduce your property taxes, okay? So, and all of a sudden, the ability for a school district to look forward, to plan forward like we have, okay, to extend levies, okay, or extending, extend coming back to voters. voters, okay, will get restricted, okay? If we're limited on what cash balance we can carry over, which the intent of cash balance is to do 90 days of cash balance on hand, was so that we could make payrolls, so that we could do some long-term planning, and that was really a minimum, the 90 days was a minimum to go to, it wasn't a maximum. And I think, yeah, I don't know where it came from, but I think it was misread that that was a maximum and not a minimum. But in effect, again, just like the other 14 bills, it has the impact of being very negative to any school district within Ohio, specifically our school district alone. Districts at the 20 mil floor. In 2003, there were, for Class One property, and this has gone up and down, 300 districts at the 20 mil floor. In 2012, there were 122. In 2023, going back, so that's the tax year, there were, of the 609, 610 school districts in the state, 420 of them were at the 20 mil floor, the Class One or Class Two property, okay? So over two-thirds of the school districts are now at that 20 mil floor with that. And with the, and I think there's another round with the triennial, sex and hill valuations coming for the 25 and the 26, that, that may increase that as we go forward, okay? So certainly, there, there is this shift that is going on to local property taxes. For the last five years, every time I gave the five-year forecast update, we put that chart up that showed, I think when I first came here, it was, you know, in the 50s, 55, 45, and then it went to 58, you know, 42, and then it went to 60, 40, and then it's, you know, it's approaching 65, 35 on the local share versus state shares, okay? Why is that? Well, it's not only because of the way the property taxes are structured, but it's also because we are on the state funding, we are at a guaranteed level, which right now, our guarantee goes back to at least 2019, where the state is saying that, hey, because of your local wealth, okay, we're going to freeze you at what we gave you as total dollar amount 2019.
So it's, so not only is it a lower amount, 30%, 35%, it's at fiscal year 2019?
Correct. All right, so we're going back to there with it, which means, and I think we've said this and tried to convey it, that, that in an inflationary economy, which we are, okay, except for maybe very, you know, isolated points in time, okay, that even inflationary increases have to be borne 100% by what? Our other revenue, local property taxes, to do that, okay? So we, we understand the pressure that's being put on local property taxes, but this is, is, this is the, I guess, lack of a better phrase, the, the rules of the game of how schools are funded in the state. Does not mean we agree with them. We certainly grasp for every dollar we can get. But one of the things that we're fighting for, and we're advocating for, and it's really in two areas. On the, on the state Biennium process, for, for state funding, I think there's three things. One is, we need the guarantee kept in place. The original governor's bill looked at reducing the guarantee so that we wouldn't lose money, okay, adding more pressure locally then. The House bill came back and gave us that guarantee, in fact, gave us that guarantee plus a little bit more money, very little bit more. But, I mean, that was something that we were hoping for. So as this moves to the Senate, okay, and I think sometimes, some of the associations and others have forgot that the Senate still has the prerogative to, to do some things in that Biennium Bill, one of the things that we want to, one of the things that we want to advocate for is leave the guarantee as is and don't reduce those back down. The second thing that we look at is there is that provision on the cash balances that currently from the House says that if your cash balance is 30% more than the prior year's expenditures, which we may be close this year, okay, then the county auditor has, again, not may, but will, reduce the taxes, okay? That's a loss of revenue for us, okay? It presents a situation where if it's over 30% this year, there's a loss of revenue the next year, those tax rates will go right back up, okay, to do that. So there, there's, there would be a lot of confusion, you know, in the community as to what, to what is really going on. So all of a sudden, they reduce it one year, but then the next year, taxes go up, in fact, without, without a vote or anything. Third, okay, is the fair school funding formula. And, and, and I say third because I always put up on top as keep us whole in the state funding, but third is, there is a fair school funding formula that, for the whole of Ohio and for all school districts, would be better if that was fully funded, or if the inputs were updated, okay? There, there's a report, and I'll send this information to you, but there's a report that goes back and looks at different funding of the state, and I'll, I'll read it this way. In FY '99, the state's share percentage, this is statewide, the state's share of, of funding was 45.7%. Since 1999, that percentage has declined and is now, in FY '25, only 38%. And if the formula is not funded, and continues as is, with the inputs going back to FY '22, by FY '27, so two years up the road, two more years, it'll go down to 32% funding. So there's the continual decline, if there's some, if those inputs aren't adjusted, if the funding formula is not fully funded, okay, again, more added pressure locally that goes on. So, you know, part, and I, and this is where, I think where our advocacy is, we're not just advocating for the school district, we're advocating for the people in this community, okay, where that pressure from, quote unquote, the rules of the game, that, you know, we play financially, are really putting more and more pressure on them. Do we like it? No. Do we advocate for change of that? Yes. On the...
I think what happens locally is that people come against school districts by voting no or, or whatever, speaking at board meetings, whatever, but the frustration doesn't make it to the state. That advocacy is missing.
We're the middleman.
Yeah. And so we're, we're a tangible place, people can come and be upset. And, I mean, the, the funding from the state just keeps going less and less and less and less, and it's not, we're, we're not changing.
Yeah.
We're, we're still surviving, we're still trying to figure out how to survive, and they're putting it here. And I think that there has to be stronger voice from communities, speaking at the state level, to say, this is not okay, to put the burden on our backs. They yell at us and say that, but we don't control the rules of the game.
The other two points I want to make, especially with the, the provision on the 30%, if the cash balance exceeds 30% of your expenses. Within the last two weeks, we had two things, you know, come to our attention or brought to us. The first one was, and these things happen, it's, it's not, you know, isolated situation. On our tax settlement, we were advanced $2.2 million more in our February settlement than was expected and anticipated. That was really kind of an over-advanced money that was really due us coming in August. Well, the question is, well, do we pay that back to the county? Do we keep it and invest it for six more months, which would be the Putin thing to do, right? Take, you know, if it's there to do that. But that $2.2 million is in our cash balance, raises us up close to or maybe exceeds the 30% threshold. We were notified last week that Duke Energy contested their valuation, and with that contesting, which, which, not finalized yet, but I, but it's going in that direction, that our school district, if the, if the, if and when the reappraisal goes down, or that valuation goes down, then we were, quote unquote, overpaid $2.4 million, which again, is in that cash balance to go forward. That is money that we'd have to pay back somewhere in the future. So I guess my point with this is, with that provision, okay, it's making things more, making things that, that happen. They do have to reap, you know, re, evaluations get contested, we even contest the valuations, right? With some property owners, well, sometimes property owners do the same thing and contest that it's too high. Those things go on, okay? Adding a provision of the 30% further complicates something that superintendents, boards of education, school district treasurers try to plan forward for the future, and all of a sudden, that, that's creating a limitation on it. I even forgot, the superintendent reminded me in the Finance Committee meeting, redo a five-year forecast twice a year, and all of a sudden, there, the part of the bill is to reduce it from five years down to three. If you reduce it down from five to three, I'm still going to do it five years because that's the Putin outlook that we want to have. All of a sudden, if you go down to three, are we looking at levy cycles every three years? Part of the reason why it was five years was to look at, on average, levy cycles and where districts do need money to do it. So every school district has their own story, and we've been trying, and I think we've been pretty consistent, you know, for the last five years of telling our story and where we're at, and the pressures that we are under to do that. So as the superintendent says, we will continue to advocate, we're...
Yeah, we're trying to get a meeting, we have a, we're trying to get a face-to-face with Senator Johnson and at least a Zoom. We were asking for two different meetings over the next couple of weeks. He's just extremely busy, as, as everything's in the Senate's lap right now, so we understand that.
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that when we, the four of us had met with Representative Byrd and Representative Schmidt, that, you know, an outcome of that is, that bill did, you know, make us whole, at least on the state, okay? We'll still always advocate for more, but, you know, appreciate, you know, them listening and responding, you know, to what, what we need, what this school district needed on that case. So it, it is complex. Hopefully, on the website, we're telling the right story to people, we're telling what it is, okay, to do it, but it is, it is complicated, and property taxes in the state are very complicated. And so we need to make them simpler and not add more layers to make it more complex to do it. There is a presentation that, in, in the Finance Committee agenda, there was a PowerPoint presentation that's available to the board that identifies the, I think it's 12 of the 14 bills that are addressing property taxes. They're not acted on yet, they're all still pending, you know, some of them, like one of them really is looking at targeted assistance and targeted relief, you know, that, we certainly advocate for that. We, you know, we know that there are some conditions that exist where, because the valuation has gone up so high and people may be on a fixed income, that is difficult, you know, to maintain those payments and do that. So we certainly advocate that, that a bill such as that can get some attention and go through. I guess if I was nervous, you know, and what maybe keeps me up at night is, two, three, four of the bills go through and, and all of a sudden, layering and layering of, of property tax relief comes upon us that, that just has a doubling and tripling effect negatively to the school district. So didn't probably make things as clear as I wanted, but the point of it is, is we, between now and the end of June, which decisions have to be made, we're going to keep, you know, our foot on the pedal and, and keep talking to those that have the ability to make some decisions on us, on our behalf, to do that. So if you have any questions on that material, trust me, it's, it's complicated to the point that when you ask me a question, I may not have the absolute answer right then and there, but we'll get it.
Thank you, Ms. Romano. Looks like we're moving on to Board Comments. Ms. Spencer?
I always get to be the first one. Thank you, I'm so lucky. Well, on, Dan, thank you for making that clear, much clearer than it was when I first got the email about Duke wanting money back. But we did have a committee meeting, a Financial Committee meeting before this meeting, and I did learn that even though our healthcare costs are continuing to rise every year, everybody's is, but our district employees are curbing that somewhat by participating in the wellness challenges that we're doing, which is really great and beneficial to everyone, for them individually and for our district as well. So I, I thought that was very encouraging, too. And, and Dan did talk a lot about the, the overpayment that the county gave us and what, how we're going to manage that, and then about Duke's reassessment of, of, whatever, property, I guess is what it is, right? It's a reassessment of the property and the utilities, right? So, but I appreciate you, you breaking it down to the three, I've got three points that we should, can try to get our legislatures and write letters to your congresspeople and legislators about the, we need to keep the guarantee, and about the too much cash balance, which would make it harder for schools to plan ahead, really, is what it sounds like to me, and that the fair school funding needs to be updated, instead of leaning back to the old, obviously, inflation, and it just needs to be stayed updated. So I appreciate you breaking it down into three parts for me, and that helps me understand it a little bit better, but, and I do truly enjoy doing this. I know it's, it's, can be daunting, but I do enjoy doing this, and I, and I'm in it for the children, to make their lives a little bit better and a little bit easier for them. So we do what we do for the kids, so just keep on trucking.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Spencer?
It's been brought to my attention about the summer projects that we had two weeks ago, and a couple of my constituents have asked me to ask the administration to either put a request for proposal on these projects, or a quote on these projects. It just doesn't look good when you have a list of projects you want to do, but there's no money attached to, of what the cost is going to be for these projects, and they just don't, they don't like that. And so I'm asking you to look into this. I'm not sure what they're looking for. I think they're just wanting to know the cost of each one of these projects, make sure we're doing, or following processes and procedures that are in place now. Number two and three, this, the concerns that you just talked about with the Claremont County Auditors, I think the, the real best thing for you to do is to mail both the county auditor her check back, or write a check back to them, and then to Duke Energy to write a check back to them. That is the honest thing that I think that we should do. We shouldn't keep money that is not due to us right at this moment, and I think that the taxpayers will be more willing maybe to mark the bond, for the bond this year, knowing that we've sent that money back and not kept it. We've, we've done what, what it, we've been transparent, because you talk about transparency all the time. This is a part of being transparent to the West Claremont community, and specifically the taxpayers.
So I know it's not my comment just yet, but a couple of things, as far as the auditor gave us options, so we're being transparent, we have options that we can do, so we can look at those options. If I understood in the Financial Committee meeting correctly, Duke is doing their petitioning, whatever they're going to petition, but that doesn't mean we, we haven't been found at fault yet, so we haven't...
Correct.
Yeah, it's not finalized yet.
So for us to write a check, we wouldn't know what even dollar amount to write a check, because Duke is just starting the process. So I don't want to put the wagon before the horse by writing these checks, if I'm correct.
Yeah, so there's two things. There's, there's, one is the over-advanced, so they basically advanced us $2.1 million of money that's due in August. They gave that in the February settlement, that's one. The second one is on the Duke Energy issue where it's not final yet, but they went back three years on the valuation, contested it, and for our district, to the tune of about $2.4 million. And if that does happen, my understanding is that would be paid not all at one time, but deducted over five years into the future. So in other words, it didn't happen in one year, okay, so it doesn't have to be paid back in one year.
Yeah, and these things get...
Why would you wait that long? Why wouldn't you just be more transparent and just get it off your plate and take care of it?
So the definition of transparent is that we're saying what is real and what is true. So the Duke, it's, it's still, it's not final, we're just letting you know. And the reality is, it's a collaboration between Duke, the district, and the auditor's office. It's not like us just making decisions.
Right. That's correct.
So we, we, we work together on this. It's, it's, it's not like a choice we're making and not being transparent. We're being very transparent about what's real.
To not be transparent, what even brought... To not be transparent, we wouldn't even have brought any of the one of those up. I'm sure there are other school districts that have not even voiced that the auditor gave it. They moved on down the road and they went down it. And different districts can do business however they want, not saying they're right or wrong, that's just what works best for them. And so we will look at what works best for us and our district and, and, you know, and kind of go from there, at least.
I think one of the things we can do, and I, and maybe this, this is a happy medium in there to do it, is we can set those funds aside, okay, until the county auditor, because what the county auditor is going to do is deduct it from our advances if, if this comes through, okay? So just both, both of those occurrences. So like the first one where they gave us the August money now...
Right.
It was clearly in a letter to us that, hey, hold on to that money, they'll just deduct it out of the August settlement. It's still due us, it just wasn't due us for six months.
I'm not saying it's not due us, I'm just saying, you know, let's give it back to them, that, give it back to them now and then get it when we're supposed to get it in August.
Right. And one of the things I can do, which may be the happy medium, is I can show that as an obligation and reserve it, okay, and do exactly what they said. I can reserve that and, and quite frankly, we get the interest earnings off of it, okay? And then when it comes to, you know, have, have that ready available, so I can set that aside and do that, okay? It's probably a, a, a good medium to do that. In other words, it's not just sitting in the cash balance, but it's designated for that purpose. Can do, when the, when the Duke thing comes through, I think two things. One, fully understanding how the county and Duke are going to handle getting that payment back, and based on those terms, do a very similar thing where once that decision is made or judgment made that, hey, that is due back, and, but the payment is, terms are over in five years, do the same thing. Deduct that out of our cash balance, put it in a reserve, okay, to set aside so that we're not spending it, right? Okay, don't want to spend it and not have it available, you know, two or three years up the road, nor do I want to mislead the community that we have 2.4 million dollars more in balance that we don't have.
We're 4.1 or 2 down.
Yeah, so, so go ahead and reserve that out of the, out of the cash balance and make it very clear, okay, that that's money that's not due us until six months up the road or three or four months up the road, whatever it is, or money that is due somebody else. So I, I don't disagree with, with being transparent with that and maybe putting that on the books that way and fully disclosing it that way, that, hey, that's pending, it, you know, may be the best for everybody, okay? But, yeah, hopefully that helps. And this won't be the last time we discuss this, I know, because there's two boards today.
Right, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand because, you know, I, I just, I just want to be transparent with everybody.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree with that, that's, that's good.
Mr. Chumley, I apologize.
I'll, I'll keep a lighter. I, I appreciate each and every one of you guys, I'm, I'm glad that, I'm not individually making decisions here, I'm glad we're all together to be able to discuss these things. And I'm glad we have a great team to be able to work through situations like this and make the best decision. And I feel like we do, most, most than not is make the best decision for us and the best decision for our community and the best decision for our students. So I appreciate each and every one of you. I hope everyone had a happy Easter. I really like the taste of Merwin. I remember when I was in school, my favorite, my favorite class was home ec, so I love cooking today, and I probably attribute that to home ec when I was in school, so I'm glad these students are getting opportunity to kind of learn that as well. I appreciate what you guys learn over there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Mr. Rudy?
I'll just say I enjoyed our celebration of students and staff today. Wonderful.
Always fun.
I, I will finish, and again, Ms. Spencer kind of highlighted on some of the things that I was in the financial committee meeting with her, so she kind of highlighted on most of what we discussed, and Dan highlighted on the other piece. And we'll say that, that we did get certification of excellence in financial reporting, which was presented to us by its, everything's acronyms here, but it's ASBO International, so that, that's, speaks some volumes to us. And again, I guess I kind of want to echo with Mr. Chumley as well, as far as we as a board, we don't need to bear the burden of individual, it's, it's us as the five sitting up here making some very tough decisions, and, and there have been tough decisions that we've had to make, and so it's, it's, it's just important that we continue to work as a team, and, and that's all of us. The other thing I always tend to forget is our next board meeting is May 7th, 2025, it's, no...
Fifth. It's the Monday before the election, which is May 6th.
I'm so, oh, let me see here. Oh my God, I, I have it right and I wrote it wrong. Thank you.
That's right, it's, it's because it's so close.
See, this is the team, this is the team that I was talking about.
These are just dates we've talked about a lot, it's the only reason I'm so confident.
Well, that's, I saw the handle up, so I apologize, let me, let me correct that. Thank you, team. Our next, our next board meeting is May 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM here at the Civic Center. Again, May 5th, just for no confusion. Thank you, team. I do not believe that we have any reason to go into executive session. So with that being said, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Mr. Rudy, second, Mr. Chumley? No discussion, I'm assuming? Thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Ambor?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you for that catch, Ms. Chumley.